Pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one instant under half indivisible liberty and justice for all.
Want to call to order the regularly scheduled public meeting for lower grand township board of supervisors for Tuesday, April 30th, two thousand and twenty-four. The board of supervisors did meet an executive session prior to tonight's meeting to discuss matters of real estate and litigation. Open up to public comments. Citizens comments, concerns or questions for items not on the agenda?
I would like to look, Danielle.
You could just state your name?
It's Carmina Taylor. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Yes, we can.
What is?
Yes, we can hear you. What is your question or comment?
Well, comment then question. I happened to run across an article that was written in August of two thousand and six. And on that day or in that moment, we had a national night out in Penland. And I'm going to email you guys the article that was written. And, you know, I had just moved relocated back into Penland from Puerto Rico. And I my impetus of having the national night out was because there was a rash of things that happened in the community. But I wanted to bring the community together. And in the article, it said at the time that it was the first that Laura Gwinnett ever had a national night out. And then I think the subsequent years it went to Lansdale. But I say that to say to all of you there, and I know there's a new board member. I've been committed to this community since I was like 10 years old when I moved here. And I just find it really interesting that when there was a majority of Republicans that ran the the Board of Supervisors, they were so much more amiable of working with the community as a whole and not a select few. And so I say that towards my question. So I'm a very busy person. I don't get to stay on top of everything. But Mr. Moore, Walter Moore is in is in wasn't in the hospital. And he's currently going to go into rehab. And I want to know the status of what and I see Ms. Gloria on the call. What's the status of the signage, the historical marker for the Penland School? Because I my intention two or three years ago when I brought it up was to make sure we honored the Moore family because Mrs. Helen Moore was the stalwart in that school. So I just want to say those two things. I've been committed to this community since a child. And I'm still committed. And what's the status of the historical marker for Penland School?
Hi, Carmina. It's Janine Martin. I know we've met a couple of times. The historic committee is still working on the language for the marker. They're actually working on the language for a few markers. And the hope is, you know, they get that done quickly and we can unveil the markers that we've previously approved for Bethlehem Baptist Church and for the Penland School.
And Janine, am I right to assume that Ms. Gloria is in charge of the language or is it the committee?
No, the committee, well, the committee is working on drafting the language and then I think the board of supervisors will ultimately approve what goes on the marker.
Okay, so the last thing I want to share with all of you, I don't know, because I don't you guys weren't there, but when Reverend Kwan put the marker in front of the church, no one from the community was invited. It was done during the weekday, like seven o'clock in the morning. And his deaconess, his deacons and his trustees were at the unveiling of that marker. I I was not told that anybody else was there, but the main thing is that people that have been involved in that church since their childhood were not invited to that. And that was part of my concern. That was part of my concern when he so swiftly asked for this to be up. So I just want to note that for the record as well.
Yeah, I understand, Carmina. Yep, I just want to.
Wait, Janine, when's the next, when's the next historical?
They're having their speaker event in June. June 4th is their is their next event. They're having a speaker event here at the township building. But I mean, going back to the Bethlehem Baptist, that was not the township's, you know, unveiling of the Bethlehem Baptist marker. That was a that is still a temporary marker that the board approved in connection with, you know, the the anniversary that the church was having. So there wasn't, you know, a township sponsored public unveiling of that marker. And when when we do install the markers, I I envision the the entire community being informed of, you know, when these markers are going up and where they're going so that the community can participate if they want to.
Thank you, Janine. When is the next historical commission meeting?
I'm not sure of the date. They move to meeting every other month because they're independently working on their research. They're working with the Historical Society to gather all the information for the different markers. So I believe there will be a meeting in in June, the third Thursday of the month, where they can discuss that research. But you'll, I mean, if you follow along with the meetings, Carmina, before language is approved, it'll be presented to the board. And so there'll be a public hearing on on our public meeting on the language for the markers. If you, you know, want to follow along, I know you do.
Thank you, Janine.
You're welcome.
Any additional questions, comments? Just want to add to the announcements that the board of supervisors did meet on April 23rd to discuss matters of real estate and litigation in addition to tonight's executive session. Next up, we have a presentation of our emergency management in Lower Gwinnett. I want to turn it over to Mr. Farrell.
Testing. Thank you. So tonight I'm going to walk through a brief, and I will emphasize brief overview of emergency management, what it means, and more specifically, what it means in Lower Gwinnett. Now, the good news about all of this is that many people in Lower Gwinnett aren't too familiar with it because we haven't had a lot of large scale emergencies here in a long time. So Jamie, could you next slide? So just as for the agenda side, we're going to define it. We're going to look at it for Lower Gwinnett, which is going to involve things like an emergency operations plan, the emergency management coordinator, the emergency operations center, the role of the board. And then how the county gets involved, you know, what we're looking at during the emergency, after an emergency. And then from a very kind of practical perspective, what are we doing next as a township to let the community know about these things? I could do the next slide, please. Okay, so from a terminology perspective, there's a lot going on when you have a major incident in the township, whether that's a fire incident, a police incident, medical. And the federal government has put together this framework that is known as NIMS, the National Incident Management System. The idea behind NIMS is that it provides very high level guidance so that when responders are approaching a scene, they have kind of a common structure to follow. And this is generally looked at as a kind of command structure component. And within that, you're going to find multiple sides of this. One is the actual incident command for the on scene side, and the other is the emergency management. And there's others that are less relevant to our conversation today. Incident Command or ICS for the Incident Command System. I want you to kind of associate that in your mind with the person, meaning that the chief first responder who is in charge of actually fighting that fire, responding to that event on the ground. So you're going to have an incident commander who's in charge of everything. Under the incident commander, the intention is that there is a consistent structure around them to support their response. Now, this is in addition to even more plans. There are things like your standard operating procedures. So if the fire department's responding to a house fire versus a vehicle fire versus rescuing somebody from floodwaters, they have standard operating procedures for all of those kind of different individual events. Incident Command is the larger structure of how the command ranks are going to go with that. The idea being that if you're at a fire scene and you say you've got a second fire responding and North Penn comes to help, North Penn can integrate into the response on scene seamlessly. Same thing if you're going across disciplines. If the police come on, they can work within the incident command system. And where ambulance comes in, they can do it as well. And they're all kind of getting into one area. When you're looking at this, you're going to have that incident commander I mentioned. They are generally going to be from whoever has primary responsibility for that incident. So if it's a fire is the primary problem, then you're going to have a fire commander. If it's a police involved incident for any reason, they're going to be in charge and the other agencies come to support them. The idea is that everybody there can kind of come and work together. Incident Command is not actually emergency management. Could you go next slide? But you have to understand that to kind of differentiate. So to define emergency management. Can we go one more? Thank you. Emergency management, the whole idea behind that is that is the team that is supporting the people that are on scene. So the emergency management team, who is generally going to look something like the township manager, the emergency management coordinator, that's me, your public works department, your township engineer, they could all be involved in these kinds of things. We are the ones that are not going to go to the scene of the fire or the crime or whatever is happening. We are going to be back from that, getting the resources to those folks that they need. Most of the time, our first responders have this well underhand. There's not going to be a whole lot of situations where we really need to activate our emergency operations center because they're used to doing this stuff day to day. It's not a day to day kind of thing in there. However, when they do need additional resources, you know, if a fire scene or a flood scene needed extra support from Fred, they might call the emergency operations center to ask for that support. Communication, can you get word out to somebody else or ask for help from the county? They could do all those things to an emergency operations center. The idea is that the incident commander gets to work on taking care of what's on scene. And the emergency management team is getting them the resources and support they need to be able to do that job. Emergency, can you go back one? The other sides that we're going to look at with emergency management is it's where we're doing a lot of preparation and planning from a non SOP side. So the police and the fire departments can be rehearsing their SOPs. We're going to be looking at the planning for how the township is going to coordinate that, delineate lines of authority and things like that as we're going through. And we're also going to help with the public outreach side. Fire department's still going to reach out about doing smoke alarms. But when we're talking about how do I sign up to get emergency alerts for what's going on in the township? That's where emergency management is going to come in. Okay, thank you. So tonight, what you're looking at as a board is our emergency operations plan. And the couple of things that I want you to know, I mean, you've got the FEMA definition on there. A couple of things to keep in mind is, one, it's going to say how the lines of authority work. You, the board of supervisors, are ultimately responsible for the safety and well being of the residents here. And that, two, you're delegating that authority to your operations staff to to do those kinds of tasks. You're also going to do things like allocate resources. And you're also going to make sure that this plan, as you look at it, takes what we call an all hazards approach. We want to have a structure that back to that framework idea in place so that no matter what incident we run into, we can activate this plan and respond effectively and support those first responders. The plan is basically in three general sections. The basic plan, which is the document you're actually reading and hopefully going to approve tonight, that's going to say again those lines of authority and things like that. Then you have the notification resource manual. That's basically the list of phone numbers and email addresses for all of the people who are in this room that we might need to contact, as well as things like large facility owners and those that own special facilities like nursing home facilities, schools, anybody that's storing kind of hazardous materials or anything like that, how we get in touch with all them. So that is not made public. There's a lot of personal information there. Then we have these things called functional checklists. This is when somebody comes to the emergency operations center. So we, let's imagine that we activated and Fred came to support the public work side. We would have a checklist ready for Fred to all the things that he needs to check in on, look at, that would be relevant to that emergency. And we kind of have drafts pre-prepared for that that we can, of course, modify if we need to.
How do you come up with the drafts and the checklist? Was that based on federal guidance, state guidance?
Yes, so it's 100% based on guidance. So because emergency management at this level, you know, it happens across the country and has been used many, many times over. This has been templated to death and back. So we've got a lot of good models to work on. The plan that we worked on was a model from Pima that we modified to the township. We're doing the same thing for the functional checklists. We also have appendices that come in. Those can be incident specific or hazard specific plans. We don't need a whole lot of them for the township. You know, Jim Stormwood or management stuff he's going to talk about actually gets to some of what we have here. But it also has for specific facilities, like I was talking about, whether it's hazardous materials or schools and things like that. When they have their response plans, we make those part of our appendices too, so that if something's happening, we have quick access to that to know what's going on. Those again are not part of what goes out to the public. That's stuff for internal coordination. Jamie, next slide, please. So what are we doing? We've touched on a little bit of this already. Your staff internally is, you know, this is for the staff side. We're planning, we're figuring out what resources we have ready. We're collecting those individual plans. And I want to see the individual facility plans are interesting because there's a lot of thresholds from the state and federal level that say you have to report when you have X amount of a certain chemical. And a lot of what you get is a lot more innocuous than you might think. Because if you have large generators and you just have a lot of diesel fuel, that can qualify that you have to report that in as as a hazardous material, even though it's really just regular old diesel fuel in large quantities for your generators. The other things we're going to do is we're going to make sure that we have a location available for an emergency operations center. We've seen through COVID that we can do a lot of things virtually. Emergency operations is one of them that has been proven to work very well that way. But we also have the plan that we could use the township building if we needed the physical facility for any reason. Again, we're getting back to, you know, looking at a lot of support for first responders, getting those resources, making those phone calls that they need help with, and then documenting. Documenting, documenting is critical so that when the emergency is over, if it qualifies, we can look for support in funding in terms of reimbursements. There's also a line to the county that gets very important here that I'll touch on in a minute. When things get bigger, we can pull the county into assistance as well. So what is your role as a board in emergency management? Well, the first thing you're going to do is make sure that we are being accountable to you in terms of that we are conducting planning efforts and trainings and things like that. Making sure that we have an updated plan is a really good start for that. And then when it comes to policy, support, things like that. You know, we may come to in the future and say, hey, we want to make sure we have some some agreements in place with local vendors. If we run out of a certain emergency supply that we can get it very quickly so that, you know, we have that set up in advance. We may be asking to approve things like that. During an emergency, we want to make sure that you're in touch with us so that we can make sure that the word is getting back to you for what's going on and that you can help us get the word out to the public. So if we're trying to tell the public to shelter in place or to evacuate, you will have fantastic communication networks. We want to leverage everyone we can when we're getting those messages out. Finally, in some cases, we may need you to declare emergencies. And there's two general types that we could use in the township. Snow emergencies, keep cars off the road if you have a place to park them like a driveway or a garage. You know, kind of simple one like that. But then disaster emergencies are something a little bigger. This would be something that would be, we could do in advance. We know a hurricane is coming. We could declare this disaster emergency in advance so that we have these powers. Those powers being to reiterate the authority lines, suspend purchasing rules for emergency related purchasing that we wouldn't have to go out to bid if we needed something quickly. But they also make us eligible for assistance afterward. We can do that before, like I said, we can do it while the emergency is going on. And we generally have at least a week or two afterwards, in some cases up to 30 days to say we're declaring an emergency so that we're eligible for reimbursement later. Next slide, please. Now, when would the county get involved? Basically, if the incident that we're dealing with goes beyond what we have the capability to control and respond to, or once it starts approaching multiple municipalities, which is a very likely case in a township this size, that's when they're going to come in. They, in most cases, even for snowstorms, are activating their watch desks before it ever happens. If they have any advance warning, they do. And if we do, we can, we need to go up to them. They can bring things in like hazmat teams. They can bring in Swiftwater Rescue for getting people out of flooded situations, things like that. They have emergency communications. I have another acronym, IPOS, the Integrated Public Alert Warning System. Think of that as the one that screeches down on your phone when you have like an amber alert or severe storm warning. They have access to that and could alert our residents through that, also through TV, radio broadcasts with the emergency alert system. And they can actually supplement our staff in some cases if we needed something specific. They are also, very importantly, the path where we get to state and federal resources, that things are getting really big and really out of hand to a large, large degree emergency. Finally, after the emergency, there's a role with emergency management where we have to do things like damage reporting to kind of figure out what has gone wrong, what kind of loss we're looking at. There are dollar thresholds that have to be met at the county and state level before it triggers assistance from various levels of government. And those can be with loans and actual direct funding and things like that. There's also a whole aspect of debris removal, which can be everything from getting our streets clear to getting flooded houses cleaned out and how that happens. These things have a lot of federal guidelines and procedures attached to them that can get quite strenuous. But that's where the emergency manager folks come in and kind of try to regulate that process to give us the best odds of getting our people and our businesses and our government reimbursed for this. And ultimately, the idea is we get that recovery and return to what is the new normal post our disaster. Last slide, what's next? Well, hopefully tonight we're approving the plan. The staff has been in the process of updating the notification resource manual. We're going to continue to do that. It will never really stop getting updated because we have turnover everywhere. And now we're going to be looking at some practice exercises in the future. And this is one of the things that we want you to hold us accountable for. Are you testing the plan? Are you updating the plan after the test to make sure that you're incorporating lessons learned? We're also doing a bunch of training right now. Several of us in the staff have attended it. And we're also going to be making a push for information to the community. How do they find out when there's an emergency and what they should do in the township? We're already tapped into the Ready Monaco system, so readymonco.org, people can sign up for that. We'll certainly be posting things to the township website. So if you sign up for the website notices, you'll see those, as well as our social media accounts. And the other thing we're doing is we're putting together both for individuals and businesses and support resources. We're looking at probably a new website page, web page, not a website, that will say things that will available to individuals and businesses and things like that after something happens. Thank you very much. I'm happy to take any questions.
Yeah, thanks, John. So I'm curious. There was a pre-existing emergency plan in the township. Did you just throw that out and start over? Did you take it as a template and improve it? And if you made changes to improve it, what what did you change?
Sure, great question. So yes, there had been a plan in place. That plan was based on a Pima template as well. So Pima, the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency, is the state level coordinator for that. And they have updated their templates since the old one was written. So what I did was I looked at where it had differentiated from the old template, looked at the new template, and then customized beyond that. So it was kind of like stacking one thing on top of the other. Some things that did get updated was just general information about the township. You know, things like demographics that were in there. There was a new structure for how what we call emergency support functions were structured in there. Emergency support functions are essentially kind of like the different departments that would respond to things. Things like public works would be one side of it. You know, the public health side of it would be another one. And we tried to outline where those services would come from. For example, if there's a public health incident that we needed some like real on the ground infectious disease kind of response, the township would not have the capability to do that. We'd be looking to the county or state to help with that. So we tried to outline those kinds of things more specifically. We also tried to work on some of the communication lines. We actually found some, sorry, Pima, but some problems with the Pima template because it was designed for counties or townships where there were things that the township actually doesn't have access to, like alerting your phones. We can't do that directly, but Montgomery County can. So we tried to specify where we realistically had the ability to do things where we needed to ask for help in there. Is that answer your question?
I just was wondering if there was some major change from the state down that affected us in the township level?
No, fortunately it didn't. The thing that I will say is that for an emergency operations plan to be considered current, a majority of the board members that sign the promulgation document have to be sitting on the board. And that was not true of the old plan. So even if we kept the same plan, we would have needed to do a re-promulgation at this stage.
Last question. So this is really nice. I like how you've really done a lot of hard work getting it in place. When can we expect to see the plan executed? I mean, like, when will people be trained and, you know, when when will we have names associated with the roles and things like that?
So in terms of true execution for an emergency, I hope never. In terms of from a training perspective, we are actually working on some training in June. The public version of this plan that we're approving tonight will never likely have individual names assigned to it. It will simply have titles assigned to it. However, on the backend and things like the notification resource manual, which we can, of course, share with the board, we can look at who's connected to each of those roles. And I'd say most, if not all, of them are assigned at this point.
So internally, you've made assignments?
Yes.
Okay.
And the assignments were really just reflecting the reality of where people are already responsible for things today. That was kind of our goal was to match our day to day operations as much as possible.
Okay. All right.
Thank you. This is great. Quick question. You talked about communication. You said there is readymonco.org, the township website, social media. Is there any or all three of them equally, I guess, beneficial for a township? I would think the township websites or social media would be a little more specific to Lower Gwinnett. But if you, you know, is there anything, should we be connected to all three of them? What would you suggest for us to, for us and for us to tell the township?
I like promoting as many as possible because different people have kind of, I think, different preferences for if they'd rather get a text message where there's a problem versus look at it on Facebook, kind of, do I want that pushed to me or do I want to go search for it? So I recommend doing as many as possible. And, you know, with things like Ready Monaco, you can really set, I want to get text messages, I want to get phone calls, things like that. We're going to blast it to as many as possible when we need to do something. We even tested that a little bit with a notice about the Spring House intersection construction. We put a low priority message through there to test Ready Monaco. And it worked out. And it's nice because we cannot only, in that system, you can say, I want access or I want information from Lower Gwinnett, but you could also pick neighboring townships if you wanted to as well. So you have that choice and then it'll kind of filter out when we send a message to people that wanted that or have their address in the township.
Okay, that's cool. And when was the last time there was any type of this plan was implemented? Do you know?
I was actually trying to find that answer out. Snow emergencies was the only one I was able to locate over the last 10 years or so. So I did not see any, at least declarations for anything in the last 10 years, but I haven't looked much further beyond that.
With COVID, didn't we have an emergency? COVID, was that declared in the township or just at the state level?
I did not see any township declaration for COVID.
Most of the municipalities probably, you probably did declare an emergency, but that was such a different situation. There wasn't so much of the, you know, emergency management component here, other than maybe getting PP personal protective equipment for, you know, police or fire or things like that. You would have been doing that. We got funding so that I'm sure you must have declared an emergency, but that wasn't really triggering this plan. Just because a global pandemic is exactly what what this is.
Right, but I'm also remembering there was a train derailment. That may, that wasn't in our township, I guess, but that was an emergency.
Absolutely. Train derailment would absolutely qualify.
Just a quick question as an aside from the emergency management, Ready Monaco, can that be utilized to can that be utilized to advise residents that there's an accident on the street, maybe avoid this? And we have the ability to engage with Ready Monaco to, based upon you saying you used it for the Spring House intersection, do we have the ability to engage with Ready Monaco to alert our neighbors, you know, avoid gypsy hell because there's an accident or something like that?
Yes, I I've signed up for a lot of the neighboring alerts, neighboring townships. When 202 was shut down yesterday, there was alerts that went out. For the low priority messages, even things like trails being closed go out on Ready Monaco some days.
Like a tree down on a trail or something like that, avoid that area?
Right, if the trail is usually if it's fully closed.
Individuals have to sign up for it, correct?
Correct.
So if you don't sign up for it, you're not going to get the message.
Exactly.
And who sends it out? Does the township send out the alert? Like, once we become aware of a trip, you know, a car accident or a tree down, we put it out on Ready Monaco?
Yes, they actually give us direct login, send it out access, yes.
So we are communicating with our own residents through the county's technology, essentially.
Correct.
And we sync that with like social media?
I think we need to.
Website or something like?
We are pushing that on our website currently so that everyone that wants to be advised can be advised through Ready Monaco. It's just that it's up to us to kind of advertise it and make sure that everybody knows that this resource is here. We haven't used it in that capacity in the past. Am I correct?
As far as I know, it's just been for the Spring Garden intersection, our Spring House intersection, sorry. And what we did, Janine, just to, from a consistency of messaging standpoint, we took the message that was put on the website and essentially pasted that into Ready Monaco. So we made sure everything was saying the same thing.
Okay. Even in the event of like anything that might not rise to the level of an emergency, we could communicate with people to avoid an area or an issue or trail.
A horrible accident.
Like a fire, like a horrible accident, like we can say, you know, avoid this area, find alternative routes, that kind of thing.
Yes, we can.
Any additional questions from the board? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Great job. Appreciate it. So now we have before us the consideration of Resolution 202416. The resolution, I believe, is going to be up on the screen outlining the prepared emergency operation plan. And its purpose, where it would be in our code, and what we would do as supervisors related to the immediate effect of the plan on the township. Are there any questions? Any concerns? Any questions or concerns from the public? Ding, I would like to make a motion to adopt 202416, the approval of the emergency operations plan. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Just making sure for Michelle, who's not with us today, it was, there we go. Thank you so much. Next up, we have a presentation of our stormwater management strategic plan by a township engineer. Turn it over to Mr. Hirsch.
Thank you. So I have a presentation prepared and Mimi asked me to give an update on the stormwater strategic plan, but then also to sort of broaden it to general stormwater discussion and a little MS4 update in consideration of some new members on the board since the last time we talked about this. So next slide, please. So we want to just talk about various stormwater obligations of the township. You guys have a lot of competing needs for township resources. Give a quick overview of the MS4 program and those obligations, and then talk about the stormwater strategic plan and where we're at and where we're going to hopefully go from here. So I broke the obligations down into needs and wants, needs being things that you're already obligated to. MS4 compliance, we'll talk about that a bit in a moment. The pollution reduction plan, which goes along with the MS4 program, that's planned water quality BMPs that have already been approved by DEP and there's an expectation that the township follow through with that plan. Along with maintenance and potential replacement of existing facilities, you have a lot of infrastructure, a lot of aging infrastructure as well. So inlets, pipes, culverts, basins, rain gardens, all those things need continued maintenance, costs money to maintain, and then also cost money to replace. Additionally, you've entered into participation in the Wissahickin Clean Water Partnership. We refer to that as the QIP. That's a collection of 13 municipalities for wastewater treatment plants that are aiming to get an alternative pollution reduction plan approved by DEP, ultimately EPA, to improve the water quality within the Wissahickin watershed, which is the primary watershed in the township. Also obligations, I call these wants because there's not really a regulation that is requiring you to do them. But, you know, you've shown that you want to study flood-prone areas, identify potential solutions. We did that with the Houston Creek flood study. We're essentially doing it sort of township-wide with this stormwater implementation plan. Control stormwater on township-owned property to a practical extent. You want to be good neighbors to the people adjacent to your property, and then also just be good stewards of the environment by implementing water quality improvements on your land. And then finally, design, construction, and then the ultimate perpetual maintenance of the new infrastructure that we've identified in the, in the plans. So what is an MS4? Stands for municipal separate storm sewer system. And that is the network of pipes, culverts, roadside swales, anything that basically carries stormwater along your right-of-ways and ultimately discharges to the, to creeks, which are classified as waters of the Commonwealth. So because they're classified as waters of the Commonwealth, that permit is administered by DEP. It's given to the township, their five-year permit terms, and you have to comply with the conditions of the permit in order to continue to operate your storm sewer system. So compliance assistance is provided by my office to the Township Administration Department, to the Public Works Department. It's important to note that like this is an unfunded mandate. So the township is required to comply with all of these items, but you are receiving no assistance from the state government. The program, MS4 program's been in existence since 2003, and you've been complying with all of the requirements and amending your procedures and ordinances as necessary. We report to DEP on a yearly basis with what they call an annual report. This is a map of the entire township. The upper right corner is the Little Nishaminy Creek watershed. That is a small portion of your township that drains to the Little Nishaminy or drains ultimately to the Nishaminy Creek. And then the bulk, the rest of the township goes, drains from the top of the map down and ultimately to the Wissahickin. These are all tributaries to the Wissahickin. In order to comply with the, in order to comply with the minimum control measures of the MS4 programs, like just the baseline, there's six minimum control measures. They're listed up there on the board. The top two, public education and outreach, public involvement, public participation. Those are, I mean, me talking tonight to you, talking to the public about this is a checkbox for public education and outreach. There's things that the EAC does with their tree giveaway and other things that the EAC does. Whenever they give out the yearly or bi-yearly awards, that's considered public education outreach. You guys as a township do a lot more than the minimum, so your reporting is not really hard. Elicit discharge detection is making sure that the only thing in the stormwater pipes is runoff and stormwater and/or groundwater. So once a permit term, someone from my office goes out to all the various outfalls that discharge to the creek during times of dry weather, and we check to make sure that there's no flow in them. If there is flow in there, then we take a sample and we send it to a lab to make sure that it's only groundwater in there and that there's nothing, you know, unsavory or, you know, polluting. Four and five are essentially taken care of by your stormwater management ordinance and the review of permits that come in for construction. And then the observation of sites during construction. And then six is procedures that your administration has in place and namely Public Works for just things that they, you know, if they change the oil in their vehicles, they're getting rid of that in the right fashion and they're not just dumping it down a stormwater drain. So that was where the baseline, everybody has to comply with those, every municipality. If you have a watershed within your municipality that is considered impaired by DEP, then you have additional regulations, and that's the pollution reduction plans. The pollution reduction plans are aimed to reduce the amount of sediment that reaches the waterways and by treating stormwater through various best management practices. So you had a plan that's approved by DEP and it has a list of improvements, ones that have been completed to date. We did a rain garden and a basin retrofit and naturalization, actually on this campus. The rain garden's adjacent to the parking lot and the basin is behind the building. And then there was a basin retrofit, naturalization, township owns basins within the Spring House Farms development. So those, that project has also been complete. There's a two or one definite upcoming project, and that's stream bank stabilization along the Willow Run, which is the small tributary behind the township building. It is upstream and downstream of the planned Old Bethel Pike Bridge replacement. So the, the plan there is to implement that at the same time as the bridge is replaced. That, the stream bank stabilization is partially funded by a DCED watershed restoration protection grant. When I outlined the small area of the township that drains to the Little Nishaminy Creek, the township is also has to do at least one project within the Little Nishaminy watershed. And there is not a lot of available land within that area. So one idea that we came up with was to potentially partner with J&amp;J on a a grant application to do riparian enhancement and stream bank stabilization through their campus. So that'll come up a little later when we sum up some recommendations, but those like grant applications do on May 31st. And then some potential future improvements or requirements. There's going to eventually be improvements that come out of the QIP and are required by that plan. I don't think they're at a point where they're ready to quantify those or to talk about what those actually may mean in cost to each individual municipality, but it's certainly something to consider in the future. And then the MS4 permit is due to be renewed. We'll put an application in to renew it in September. And then I think the permit runs out in March of '25. So there's going to, I'm sure, be new additional regulations that are kind of pushed your way from DEP, but those haven't been published to a point where we can fully understand what they are. Do we have any questions about that stuff before we move on to the strategic plan?
Yeah, Jim, could you say how that joint effort's going to work with J&amp;J? Are they going to apply for the grant?
No, so they can't apply for the grant. Only local governments can apply for the grant. So the township would be the applicant. And I think the hope is that J&amp;J would, would be willing to grant an easement for the township to perform the work. And then the township is, I mean, the grant is 80% funded by the grant and then 20% funded by a match. I think at this point, the anticipation is the match would come from the township and the land use would come from J&amp;J, but I mean, to be determined.
And then going forward, J&amp;J would maintain that?
In a perfect world, yes, but also as part of a negotiation, I, I think you're probably going to end up needing to maintain it. But the good thing is that the riparian restoration, the stream bank stabilization are very low maintenance BMPs. The riparian restoration and enhancement is just planting trees. So there, once they're, once they survive through a maintenance period, which is generally 18 months, their survival rate is very, very good.
Okay. And lastly, is that area close to where we're drying out the no-mow grass? Is it in that big field?
It's actually in the same watershed, but not. Yeah, you're, you're up from McKean a little bit, right? West of McKean? East of McKean? Okay.
It's surrounded by J&amp;J property, right?
Okay, yeah. So then it's directly adjacent, and I'm glad that you reminded me that because that will count towards, it won't be a lot, but it'll count towards something for this Little Nishaminy MS4 requirement.
Thanks.
All right.
Actually, I have a quick question, just out of curiosity. You stated that, you know, if there's flow, you go and you test if there's any pollutants in, in the water. Has there been, just in the past year or so, has there been a lot of instances of pollutants in?
We, I think I want to say two years, two years ago, Jamie, we are, Jimmy, we can, we tested them all. Well, you don't test them all. If you don't see the flow, you don't test them. So I would say you probably only test like, you only see flow and maybe 10%. Most of the time it's groundwater, and there was nothing that came back on the test that warranted any sort of like additional testing. All clear. Okay, so we're going to move on to just an update on where we're at with the strategic plan. What we did was we had meetings with township staff consultants. We discussed historic problem areas and resident complaints that we had all sort of remembered for as long as we could remember. We had discussions with Public Works regarding drainage concerns along township roads. We reached out to the EAC to solicit additional areas of concern. We had a community meeting at Penland Woods, which probably was one of the more productive avenues for soliciting some problems. We also had a community meeting at Ambler Yards. We leaned on the Houston Creek flood study. And then also, we just had recently completed the park master plan. So all the areas adjacent to those parks are kind of, you know, had been studied a little bit. So I don't, I'm not going to go through every, like every problem that we identified. But I do want to go through a few, like select areas of the township and then kind of examples of what the issues are in those areas. And then a lot of the problems we see across the township are kind of similar to sort of what we see in those areas. The area up here, A, is that like portion of McKean Road that we had just sort of been talking about with J&amp;J's campus being right there. There, the little part of the creek that we're talking about doing the riparian restoration on is right in there. And then across McKean and uphill is Cedar Hill Road. And there's, you know, historically been some drainage concerns, runoff crossing Cedar Hill Road and then running down into like Warren and Wooded Pond. I think some of the improvements that will be done as part of the development that was approved along there will help with stormwater as far as collecting it and catching it. And I think Fred, there was some curbing installed along there at some point? Yeah, so just kind of correcting roadway drainage issues as, as they come up, as development comes in front of the Board of Supervisors, like understanding where we can try to get more improvements. If you go down to B, that's the other side of McKean, sort of south of the expressway. And we're aware of a lot of drainage concerns, water coming from the ship campus across McKean Road, some culverts that are potentially undersized. There's specifically an issue at Spring House Farm Lane and McKean, where some runoff, runoff that was, I think, intended to get into a naturalized channel through Spring House Farm, doesn't make its way there. And it, it ends up going like through an alternative swale that's sort of behind a lot of houses on Spring House Farm Lane. And as it gets closer and closer downstream, it ends up spreading wider and wider. And there's a gentleman that lives at the corner of Spring House Farm Lane and whatever that other side street is, then his pool gets flooded constantly. So the sort of example there is McKean Road is a potential to be repaved, resurfaced next year. So a great time to implement stormwater controls or curbing and inlets and re-profile is during that time. So we're going to, you know, work with Public Works to come up with a fix there and then have that sort of designed before the bids go out for the resurfacing. Other things in B are the, the stream bank stabilization and the bridge replacement that we talked about. The township's campus is, was within B. If you go down to C, that, that area there is what was studied as part of the Houston Creek flood study. And then the top of that area extends up to Aileen and Judy. There was some, there was a drainage issue at the end of Aileen a few years ago that, you know, made it onto this list. But we had, the Public Works had implemented a fix there. And, you know, I believe it's been working better. We have not had recurring complaints there. But obviously, within the strategic plan is going to be continuing to implement the improvements that were discussed during the Houston Creek flood study as part of the capital budget this year. We've already surveyed the intersection of Francis and Knight Road for a potential reprofiling there. I talked about some, when that intersection got repaved after a water main break, that some of the crown was lost. So we've got, we've got that on tap. We did survey of the, the bridge that, or the driveway bridge that serves 446, I believe, Marion. So the potential to replace or increase the size of that opening. And then always out there is the, the potential to, to partner with the school district for other basins. partner with the school district for other basins a- and and improvements in that watershed as these funding sources become available. We can you know, hope that there's more funding sources in the future, too. We go over to D, that's that's Penlin, um that's that's Ingersoll Park. The, whenever future phase of Ingersoll Park kind of comes to be, there's gonna be a chance to implement a lot of stormwater improvements there to sort of protect the park. And then, you know, as you ki- kind of come down in into Penlin, then the neighborhood meeting that Jamie and I attended, it really it brought forward a lot of the drainage issues that that happened in there, and I think that like out of everything that we've sort of categorized and and explored here, that one makes the most sense for like a specific study similar to what we did for the Houston Houston Creek area, and there's actually a, that same grant that we used for Houston Creek. It's up, it's up again, and it's due at the end of May, too, so like there's a potential to kind of write a grant application fairly quickly to sort of understand a lot more about what's going on there, because it's similar to the Houston Creek area in that like there's flooding and there's drainage issues coming from a number of different avenues, and it's it's hard to from just speaking with people, understand exactly like where the s- uh sort of implemented improvement should go.
So Jim, I'm sorry, can you explain what the uh flooding or the wet area is? It's it's actually in the community of Penland?
Uh yeah, so I think what some of the worst that I can see or that I saw from pictures is the entrance to the Penland Woods Park. Uh the water was just comes down the entrance, comes down those roads, none of those roads have inlets, I mean, there's a couple of uh culvert pipes underneath, but then it just, it just overwhelms, and it looks like floods just kind of through through the road, through the neighborhood. I mean, there were pictures of people with like water up to their chests, standing next to their houses. I mean, there was certainly a hurricane-type event, um but I'm sure if it does that during a hurricane, that it maybe is up to their shins.
So what, when did that happen?
It happened at the, just the last storm in the spring, so I can share the pictures with you. They shared them at the, at the actual meeting, but what they were kind of categorizing is that since baseball field and the community center have been built, and the road that has been repaved on Township Line Road, they've seen an increase in in flooding, and it's kind of gotten drastic, and they don't have any stormwater drains in Penland, in the entirety of the community, there are no stormwater drains. So when water kind of gets in, it doesn't have a necessarily a place to go.
Yeah, that's true of my neighborhood.
They, Township Line Road kind of separates Lower Gwinnett from Whitpain. And so the actual creek kind of moves over to Whitpain side at a portion, but that's where a significant amount of the flooding is.
Yeah, that that is a wetland.
Yeah, and it wa- I mean, it would be competitive for that flood mitigation grant because there are a lot of flood plains through there. The flood mitigation grant isn't great for projects where you have no ability to af- affect a flood plain.
So would we work with Whitpain to sort out that area to make sure we can try to, you know, keep it from flooding? Um is that something that we would do, or are we working in silos?
Um we could certainly talk to, we could certainly talk to Whitpain and and engage them, I think part of the I mean, all of, a lot of the runoff i- is coming from Lower Gwinnett, it's coming from or actually, the the township's park is is right within that that watershed, so I mean, part of, after that meeting, and as part of just the, you know, background of the strategic plan, wanna pull the the development plans for for that park and figure out if there is any stormwater management that was implemented, if not, i- is there area that the township owns that could be ripe for something like that?
I think the major difference between this and like Houston Brookside Avenue is that we're kind of working with the school district and and Brookside Avenue, or we need to partner with them. For this, i- it seems like it does.
It's all us.
Yeah.
But do you know, Jim, if there's, I mean, because we we'd have to apply for the grant, then we'd have to wait get the grant and then do the study, are there like fixes that we can do in the short term, like we did on Brookside where it was like cleaning out culverts and there were sort of other things that I feel like we did as best we could to manage the issue while we waited for the study?
I mean, I I definitely think that as far as where we're at with the strategic plan and the the scope and and the budget, there's certainly ru- room in there to continue to kind of explore this a a little deeper as we get kind of through this, and I can take a, you know, ride and with Fred, and we can kind of go out there and spend a little more time in the neighborhood, for sure.
I think we would like definitely want to prioritize that, given the fact that they don't have stormwater drains, so there's not those easy in-the-face kind of solutions that you can do on Brookside or or Francis, at least to get the water a place to go. Really doesn't have a clear place to go except for in their homes and on their properties.
It's a very challenging area, and then on top of that, there's a lot of um paper streets and alleys and it's kind of just drainage that has been sort of kind of cobbled together o- over time.
Yeah. In the event that we decide to apply for the for the grant, irrespective of that, can we prioritize that moving forward?
Sure.
Okay.
Um just
Knowing that the, I know that you were there, so you know that has the the fear that they were talking about as we approached the spring and the summer where we have those flash storms and flooding, and that's why I'm making sure that we're clear.
So the flooding that here can get can get up to people's chests, is that what you were saying in this area?
I mean, that that was just a picture that I saw that was certainly during a a more extreme event. I don't know what the frequency uh of that is, but I, it was
With no storm drains, I can
It was certainly eye-opening, I'll say that.
With the park.
So and then I guess is that like an emergency where, you know, we would send out a message through Freddie Mocker or something, say it's flooding in this area, avoid it, is that something that we would do, or does that make sense, or no?
Me, I think that definitely would be, well, like John.
Yes, that that would certainly qualify, and we have a lot of flexibility in terms of determining what we want to send out like that. So yes, if we think it qualifies, it's really our decision to do that or not, so we certainly could. Okay.
Jim, uh and Danielle, who's lived here so long, I I think of the Penland Woods and Penland area as being flat. But the creek does run through there, uh so that, you know, there is some movement, so uh how I guess this is what you're saying, how would you address um getting the water um channeled to the creek or a basin or something?
And that's so, a couple weeks before we went, I actually walked the Willa Run through Penland with some of the neighbors, and it didn't used to be as high as it is now, and I think people have moved it over time. I don't know if it was purposefully, or I don't know if it was accidentally. So those are the, some of the questions I was gonna ask when you were finished, as it relates to do we have the ability to kind of improve some of that pathway, to change some of that graph, what, you know? Is DEP going to allow any of that?
Uh unfor-
I know that it was asked in the meeting, and someone said
Yeah.
bulldoze it straight across to the Wisshaken, we know we can't do that, but it would solve it.
Problem solvers.
Yeah, unfortunately, I I think D- DEP certainly discourages and doesn't allow the realignment of 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 creeks. But that said, like, it's looking at it deeper and and trying to figure out exactly what we can do within the regulations that are kind of in place, certainly something we can do.
And 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 without the study, what we not know, some of the causes for the increase of the pathways, I know that um with the construction of some of the homes, we've kind of saw like where the construction of the homes related to Brookside, even though it was far away, kind of dealt with an increase of water kind of coming down towards where Brookside is. Understanding that on the other side of Penland and and the Polo Club being a new construction, uh the construction of all of those homes does, would that or could that have an impact in the community that's kind of downstream and down as far as elevation is concerned um from those homes?
When you say polo club, you mean like
I call it the Yeah, like all of the stuff on the other side of Gwinnett Avenue, yeah, on Sea, all of that. You know what I'm saying, so one side of the little train tracks is Penland Community, and the other side is
It's Gwinnett Avenue, I think that's
Yeah, it's Gwinnett Avenue, that kind of
It floods up there, too.
I mean, I think in, I think a generalized statement is that development everywhere affects stormwater downstream of it. I don't know that like
It's explicit?
Yeah, and whenever the Polo Club or a- any of those developments went in, they would have needed to comply with the stormwater ordinances that were in place at the time.
I hear that everyone says that, and we all just kind of hope that the stormwater that you comply with is sufficient.
Sure.
When do we get to a place where we can kind of see that maybe it wasn't sufficient?
I think that as you look at stormwater regulations, and they've gotten a lot stricter from the time when they first came into place until now, that sort of speaks to even the experts saying that maybe they weren't suffi- maybe they weren't sufficient thirty, forty years ago, and we need to continue to to do more and more, I mean, they only get stricter and stricter.
Yeah.
But they're constantly weighing that a- against, you know, advancement and and development.
And then I guess
One thing we we may be able to take, we we can't obviously go back to a development that's already built and say, hey, you were supposed to control this much water, you built what was approved, and it's not working. But we can just make sure what's it, what was built was was being maintained. Um we we can't, some of those older plans, we can't necessarily enforce it, because there wasn't always the language to say homeowner association, or what's worse yet, you homeowner, single homeowner with a basin or things like that. But we can at least go and take a look, because that may also help with looking for solutions, short uh near-term solutions, if we clean out this basin, if we, you know, like, and and then make some decisions if the township needs to do something, even though maybe it's an HOA responsibility, so I don't know how f- far in depth you got, Jim, but that's, there could be you know, on the margins, some things we could look at that one.
That was one of the uh EAC questions was um you know, how to address all the different sto- stormwater basins in Lower Gwinnett, is there gonna be a I guess there can't be one overriding strategy because of um
And I I think a- as in any strategic plan, you know, this this is one, first of all, reminder, one plan of many that we're implementing right now. Even within this, you know, there there's only so much we're gonna be able to do at one time, so what we're gonna need from the board is prioritization. Tell us, tell the staff what you want us to focus on, and right now, I'm certainly hearing Penlin should be that. So we probably want to focus on what what are developments that we think could be feeding the water that that's coming into Penlin. If we scatter shot across the township, all we'll wind up with is a very long list and very little done. So we, you know, I think we should pick areas to focus on.
I'll just make one last observation about Penland Woods. Um I had a a walk with a friend who's an environmentalist, and she pointed out that um and this impacts the um usefulness, I guess, of the um wetlands for absorbing water, there's no lower layer of vegetation, there's no middle layer of vegetation. So the deer have essentially cleaned out what would be the next generation of trees in that area. So that is one way to mitigate runoff, not, I don't know if the water is running from what direction it's running toward Penland, but that's is an observation to keep in mind.
Okay, yeah, I appreciate that, does the, you said that person was on the EAC or just a friend of yours?
Both.
Okay. It, could the EAC follow up with maybe some recommendations for how to reestablish that middle layer? I mean, aside from like getting rid of all the deer, which I've heard is a problem, but
Yeah, I uh I spoke to some people in the forestry, um the Conservation Department of the State, and there's two women who who cover the eastern part of the state, including Montgomery County, and they can come and take a look uh at our woodlots. And um I I know John has has been interested in this recently, which I really appreciate, uh and give us some ideas of of what we can do to mitigate uh some of this problem.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry for interrupting.
No, it's all good, that's the point of this, I think. Um so I'll just kind of quickly go through the other areas, because there was not as much that kind of came up in them, and they're kind of sort of uh representative of of the rest of the township. But um I highlighted E because i- the Willa Run ki- kind of comes through here, and that does swell a lot during during heavy rains, specifically as it goes through the Woodbridge Meadows development. Um and then also wanted to highlight Woodbridge Meadows as a uh community that has an established HOA, and they have stormwater controls. Uh they got a couple ponds o- on their site, and um they have over s- over the last number of years been contacting the township and asking kind of what do we do with this pond, it needs to be dredged. And we kind of directed them to some consultants that could help them, and they've um they're working on on a plan to to sort of help their own issues, and that's important because the township has their own set of of problems to deal with, and it's important that we kind of draw the line between like what issues we're fixing and and which ones uh we're not addressing. And then um F is there was a, it was a development that was a potential for for that corner of Summie Town and Evans. And then there's a road off of Summie Town Stone Bri- Stone Bridge, is that right? Stone Bridge, and a few years ago, there was, or I think last year, Fred and Public Works replaced a a corrugated metal stormpipe that had collapsed under the road, and when it collapsed, water was backing up and sort of surcharging coming out of the inlets and getting into the um between the pavement and the and the stone and sort of causing like a ripple effect in the road. Um I just wanted to highlight that because one of the recommendations is to um budget m- some money every year to kind of be televising and inspecting a lot of the older infrastructure that the township has, so that we can understand, is there a development where there's a lot of CMP pipe and it is going to all fail at the same time? And you're gonna want to be able to budget some money to to kind of foresee those replacements and potentially get to them before they become a major issue. Area G is bound by two two oh two um Septa, uh Schoolhouse Lane area. Gwinnett Pines is a development that's at the end of Gypsy Hill Road, we've been staff has had a couple of discussions uh with residents that live at the the back end of the Gwinnett Pines Development, we've had meetings on site with uh with Penn Dot, with Septa, we have a follow-up meeting to- tomorrow with us, with Septa and Penn Dot to come and try to figure out what best can be uh done to to fix those drainage issues or to at least um alleviate them to the best that they can be, the creek kind of comes under two oh two, and then it makes a turn and goes under Septa, and so um I think the the Septa culvert is probably undersized, it doesn't look like i- much has been done to it in a very long time, so we're just working with those two entities to try to um assist the resident, so in in this instance, it's not necessarily runoff coming from the the township's property or or anything like that, but we're just kind of working with the residents. And uh H is a similar situation, we've had a couple, it's a community where there's not a lot of drainage, not a lot of inlets, not a lot of um piping w- within there. w- within there, but um Stonington Circle is the, the kind of the road that we've had a couple of complaints on and it's just kind of making sure that nothing the township has, none of our infrastructures contributing to the issue and then co- communicating as best as we can to the residents that there's not a township solution to, to those issues. So these are some preliminary recommendations. I think I went through most of them as I was speaking, but continuing to pursue the partnership with J and J for that MS four project on their campus. That's a watershed restoration grant uh due May thirty first. So if you guys are in favor of us at least making that application, then what we would do is would work with Jamie and I would work together to put the application together and get um, a resolution for, for action. You have a meeting bef- at least one meeting before then. Um, continue the implementation of this Houston Creek study with the recommendations we're doing right now, ones we want to do in the future. Um, budget some money and uh, you know, I would work with staff to come up with a recommendation for something that we think is uh reasonable and then also we would have targeted areas because we're not just going to start TVing all the stormpipes. But if um, you know, based on the time the development went in, we can kind of surmise what the material or the pipe would be and whether it's like um, going to fail soon or not. And then uh, the, the Penland neighborhood, uh, the D C E D flood mitigation program, it's uh, do the same time as the watershed restoration protection. And uh, you know, plan and design roadway drainage improvements to coincide with the resurfacing schedule. We talked about that potential of McKean Road. Um, we're going to actually be resurfacing Schoolhouse Lane this year and there's been an ongoing drainage issue at the kind of close to the two oh two and uh Schoolhouse intersection. Um, we're going to put a stormwater pipe in there to, to help that before we pave the road because once you pave the road, you don't want to reopen it. And um, incorporate stormwater projects as the park and rec projects are implemented. That's, I mean, any project that we do as part of the master park plans, all that phasing is going to need to do stormwater management just because of the regulations, but then also looking at expanding those improvements um to, to maybe even do a little more than the ordinance requ- requires if we think it'll have a measurable benefit. And then obviously we have to continue to uh work on and stay in compliance with the MS four requirements, which unfortunately are ever changing and becoming more stringent.
So to Mimi's point, do you have the bandwidth to write two grants that are due at the same time?
Uh, yeah, I mean, we was already planning on writing one and I think that a lot of the language for the uh Penlin uh neighborhood study can be borrowed from the, the Houston, the Creek grant application.
Good. I think that one should move forward.
That's all I had.
My goodness. Thank you so much, Jim. Are there any additional questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Thank you so much. Um. Next up, we have a review of our financial report for two thousand and twenty-four. Anybody have any questions related to our financial report?
I do, I do. Um, we, in, in your memo, Melinda, thank you for putting all this together. It's very helpful for us to make sense of it. Um, the ARPA money current amount is a little over three hundred thousand left to spend. We've already allocated where we're spending that, correct, or?
In a couple of different places.
Okay. But it's not.
Um, yes, we've allocated to, to do that to different projects or whatever that were coming up, but we have to make sure that they're going to be done and completed. So we've kind of probably overstretched it just to make sure that we have it covered.
Okay, great. So we're not worried about using that money. We've, we've already figured that out.
Yeah, I don't think so.
Yep. Okay. And then my other question, um, and I I think I know the answer from all of our meetings. But um, just for the benefit of my fellow supervisors and for the public, the fund balance versus the cash balance total, they're not the same numbers.
No, they wouldn't be.
So can you just explain the difference between the two of them so we know when we're looking at them?
Okay, so the, the cash balance is actually the cash we have in the bank. The reason the fund balance could be different. So in the sewer fund, obviously some of the cash was used for things that are assets that are on, on the balance sheet. So if the cash is used for the assets and you have them up on your balance sheet, your cash balance will not equal, okay, that. Also, you have transfers to different funds that go in and out, okay? So that would make the difference, but basically it's what's in the balance sheet. So a fund that has more, excuse me, more balance sheet items, that's where the cash went and that's sitting there. So like for, for an asset that's up there, I know we don't have depreciation, but the only sewer funds you do. So that's why there's the difference.
Okay, so if, when, when we want to know, I mean, it sort of says it in the title, but just to make sure. When we want to know how much cash is in the account, we're looking at the cash balance total.
You have to look at the cash balance, yes. The fund balance is basically your, your surplus and, and deficit netted together every year since the inception of the fund. So that will differ from your cash balance.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Any additional questions?
Yeah, are you, are you guys continuing to um sort of streamline the different uh line items? At one point you were going to get rid of some things or condense some of the.
Yeah, we're talking about that in the, in the finance committee and there are some that are pretty easy um to do where they're kind of repetitious, like payroll taxes could be one line item instead of, you know, two broken out between social security and Medicare and things like that. And then also trying to um see if there's funds that we might be able to combine that make more sense. And um, so we're discussing that and we're trying to come up with something so that um maybe uh closer at the end of the summer or fall, if there's any budget amendments or anything like that, we can propose that at that time.
Okay.
I have two questions really quick. Do you want to go first? Um, so just, this is just for my awareness, the fines, is it related to licensing and permit or the, the fine line item, which is three thirty-one? Is it actual fines we're paying or that we are receiving?
Okay, so let me find where you are looking exactly so that I know.
I'm looking at the prior years um and the current year on page one, number line three.
Under the general. Okay, so if it's a three hundred account, it's a revenue account.
Okay.
And if it's a four hundred, it's an expense.
Gotcha, okay. So those are fines we're collecting.
Yes.
Negative means we.
And that's, it's a credit and that's why.
Revenue.
Okay.
It's the opposite.
So the, the other question I have now is about recreation. Um, what's happening? Um, the cash balance.
Where are you looking so I can?
Oh, on the, on the right fund balance and cash balance below that actual titled page, page one oh one.
Yes, so when you, when you're looking at that, this is one of, what I want to um explain. So at the beginning of the year, okay, first of all, anything that we collect in January that's for December, we actually book in December. So January is always late because that's the only month that we actually accrue back to the month that it's supposed to be in.
Okay.
Okay, whereas the other months are not, they're based on the cash.
Yeah.
Um, and then also real estate tax bills don't go out to the end of March, so we're not collecting a lot of the real estate taxes that would come in to offset. The, the park and rec fund is not a, doesn't um balance out. I mean, it, it could be part of the general fund. So what we normally do is we um budget a transfer in and I think in two oh two four, we have a, a transfer budgeted for a hundred and eighty thousand dollars to cover some of the expenses that go in there. So that particular fund will run in the red unless we move funds to it earlier and we normally don't. We like to see what reserves we have towards the end of the year before we make any of those transfers.
It's not that we've overspanned it, it's that we haven't moved the money there yet. We've planned for this.
Correct. And if you look at the budget, you can see that. We usually try to break even with the transfer that we pull in from um the general fund.
So we tease out all of the different aspects of recreation. We actually talk about like oh, where did I, I lost it, but we actually talk about events, recreational events versus just recreation versus parks versus adult events, which I'm assuming is like the, the informational sessions that we have. Um, is that?
Flower show tickets, things like.
Oh, okay, is that what that, okay.
Yeah.
That's what that is, okay. Is that normal, typical? That makes sense to do that? No?
Okay.
Thank you for that.
A lot of these things will probably be.
Combined.
Combined.
Okay. Jimmy, I'm sorry.
I just generally going through and I, we've talked about this in our meeting, but everything really looks like we're, we were good with our budget and our forecasting and our spending. There's nothing that stands out.
Oh, yes. I go through every single fund, every single line item before I pull this together and anything that goes over budget that we didn't plan on, I will put in the memo so that it, it points out to you, but so far we're fine. Um, the red that's generated there is, is going away by other monies that are moving around when you look at all of them. So yes, right, as of right now, we're, we're fine.
Okay, great.
Any additional questions? Any questions from the public? Thank you so much, Melinda. Um, next up, we have a consideration, advertise an amendment uh for sidewalks streets of the township code. Included in your board packet, um, is a memorandum from our assistant township supervisor. No, our assistant township manager. Um, it, it kind of walks through the proposal of the ordinance. Um, it would create a new chapter that it would establish the permitting requirements, the construction standards, the roadway drainage requirements, maintenance, restoration, repair and other regulations pertaining the driveway sidewalks and streets. A specific set of specifications would be developed by the township engineer. It would be adopted by a resolution of the board in conjunction with the ordinance. The proposed ordinance is included in the board packet. Um, this is just the request to authorize um, the advertisement. Are there any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? I'd like to make a motion to uh approve the authorization to advertise an amendment. Is there a second? Again, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you so much. Next up is a review of the Township Engineers Report for April two thousand and twenty-four. It was included in the board packet. Are there any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Thank you so much, Mr. Hirsch. Next up is the review of the Traffic Engineers Report for two thousand, April two thousand and twenty-four. Are there any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Being none, thank you so much, Mr. Dix. Um, included is, um, next up is the, the consideration of approval for the invoice report. Are there any questions from the board? Questions from the public? Like to make a motion to approve the invoice report. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up is approval of the minutes for April ninth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting. They were included in the board packet. Has everyone had a chance to review? Any questions or concerns, corrections? Like to make a motion to approve the minutes for the April ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. Board supervisor meeting, is there a second?
I can.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Um, next up, our supervisor liaisons, questions or things to highlight? Um, there was a EAC speaker series. Tessie, did you want to speak about that?
Um, so we invited uh two people who are members of the um C A C E, which is the Community Advocates for Clean Energy. And um, they gave an overview of some of the benefits that are available to both homeowners and non um profits uh that can be uh used for improving um energy um usage in the, in a person's home or in the township, for example. Um, there are many tax breaks, uh, tax credits that can be obtained for purchase of high efficiency appliances, um, replacement of windows, doors, insulation, skylights, et cetera. Um, for uh nonprofits, the IRA, this is the first time this has been available to nonprofits. Uh, they, they can take what would have been a tax credit uh to a, a resident or a profit center. And the way it works is a direct pay um to the um, usually the contractor, but in any case, um, the talks were well received. I've heard through the EAC network, some of the individuals who are here and the RF one hundred network that they would like to uh have the same speakers in their township. So I think it was uh well received.
Thank you. Um, included in the board packet are additional meetings from supervisor liaisons. Are there any questions? Being none, staff updates?
Um, in our monthly report, um, there was an update on recent activities related to, to the Spring House Intersection Project. Um, things have been moving along nicely since all the utility work uh was completed. Um, terms of excavation for the widening work. Um, all the underground stormwater facilities have been installed. Um, with the exception of, and we expect work to begin tomorrow on replacing um, the stormwater pipe that we've discussed at previous meetings on the south side of Sunny Town Pike. And that'll take a few days um to complete and, and as part of that, that is the only remaining excavation work that is needed um for the future uh widening. You've seen some other things related to curb being installed um, within the last few days. Uh, so things are, are moving along nicely. We also recognize that, you know, folks are a little frustrated at times with traffic operations at the intersection. Um, last Friday, we made some adjustments um, to the signal controller to hopefully help improve things on Norris Town Road uh, a little bit. There was an issue today that we discussed before the meeting that was brought to our attention on Bethelham Pike that we're going to look into tomorrow, which we think is, is unrelated. Um, so things are moving along nicely. The other thing to note, which have kind of exacerbated things on Norris Town Road a little bit is unrelated to the township's project, Pico has been out doing utility pole work um, on Norris Town Road and been closing the lane on Norris Town Road on days where the township's project is not closing the lane on Norris Town Road. So that's exacerbated that situation um, a little bit. Um, I know our inspector and Penn Dot um had their inspector uh come out and talk to Pico's contractor about not working before nine or after three, which happened on a couple of occasions. Uh, so we've coordinated to hopefully address that issue, uh, so it doesn't happen more in the future.
As of right now, things still seem to be moving ahead of the.
According to schedule, yeah, yep.
So your next, your next meeting is not for a few weeks in the middle of May?
Middle of May, yep.
But any changes to that, you'll update us as soon?
Yeah, and we give um, we give Jamie and, and Mimi a weekly snapshot in terms of upcoming activities for the week and if um there's any changes to the schedule um that's discussed during those monthly progress meetings, we bring it to their attention.
Thank you. Any additional questions from the board? Thank you, sir. Any additional staff updates?
Um, just real quick, we had a, a meeting with uh, people from the Brookside Avenue neighborhood last night at Ambler Yards. Jamie, Jim, John and I were all there. Uh, there was a, a small group of neighbors came out, had definitely questions about the Houston Creek flood study and then also the, the owners of Ambler Yards or active owners of, of Ambler Yards were there to a- answer questions about noise from events and, and future plans for Ambler Yards. Um, I, I think it was a good and cordial discussion. There were some good questions and answers through that and we have talked to them about setting up um some small group discussions between Ambler Yards developers and neighbors about um, so they can kind of talk a little bit more in depth about some potential plans for Ambler Yards. So we'll try to narrow down who's involved with that and come up with some dates.
Thank you. Anybody else? Supervisor comments. Tessie?
Hi, yeah. Um, so I have a few things to mention. Uh, the first is um a congratulation to the, to our local library, the Wisickin Valley Library uh for their one hundred year anniversary. Um, they just had a, an event over the weekend that. They just had a, an event over the weekend that raised quite a bit of money. They're in the throes of raising money for improvements to the building in Blue Bell. So I'd like to congratulate them on being such a treasure for the neighborhood. And also Mary Claghorn for being our representative to the library board. I'd like to thank the staff for getting our Instagram account set up. I've really enjoyed seeing the, the updates. Let's see, also, I wanted to just reiterate thanks to Jim. The EAC has been pushing as one of their long-range, long-range plans, an overhaul, a strategic plan with respect to the stormwater in the township. And, and I can see you're very far along on that. So I, I'm sure they'll be appreciative to hear that feedback also. I just want to say one word, a specific word of thanks to Santino, who helped out one of my neighbors and she was very appreciative. And so I thought I'd pass that along in a public forum, so he gets recognition. Thank you.
Mimi?
Just one thing to add to what Tessie said. I just want to thank everybody for coming out to, we had two trail cleanup events. The township hosted a trail cleanup event and then partnered with WIS Trails for another trail cleanup. So thank you to everyone coming out. And I think next year we might try and just partner with WIS Trails and encourage members of the community as well as local, local businesses to sponsor portions of our trails for a bigger cleanup. So keep your eye out for that next year.
Did you get a lot of trash picked up?
Yeah, Sandy, Sandy said there was a fair amount of interesting types of trash, so.
Great.
Jimmy?
Just like to thank Chief Kenny and his police force. Couple of weeks ago, there was a mountain man, I heard 6'8", and he was pretty violent and was, you know, I guess it was Chris Westerman, John Taylor, Dan Doyle, Garfield, and Glenn Fowler, I believe, were the ones that were able to keep us, all you guys keep us safe. But at this instance, I'd just like to thank you and thank those officers.
So just be careful when you're hiking about, apparently one of the neighbors in across from the Ingersoll House found a pretty large snake. He thinks it was a copperhead. Be mindful when you're on our trails.
Oh, boy. Okay, okay, thanks for that.
I just wanted to thank the Penland community, our staff for going out, Jim and Jamie. But on April 18th, we talked about it a bit more when we were talking about the stormwater plan and, and the Penland community came out and shared their experiences and, and shared some of their concerns related to not only stormwater but zoning and, and just overall expressed some of their grievances. And we were able to take that back, hopefully going to get answers. I wanted to thank everybody who took the time out of their day on the 18th to come out and talk, as well as thanking everybody that took time out yesterday from the Brookside Avenue area to come out and discuss potential, I guess, working with Ambler Yards and, and the community as a whole. So I appreciate everybody. I know it's difficult, I know this is a busy time of the year and it's not warm and you, you don't want to sit inside at a meeting at night. We appreciate everyone for taking time out of their days to participate in helping for the betterment of our community. With that, I would like to make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.